Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin, I just want to let anyone here in attendance know that we are going into closed session first this afternoon. So I apologize, but I want to make sure everyone knows we do believe that would take about an hour. So I just give you that heads up and apologies. Just due to scheduling of a council member, we had to do the closed session first today, which is on the agenda, but just we do expect that to take about an hour. So we expect that we'll be back here for the regular meeting at four o'clock, just to give everyone that heads up.
Are we ready otherwise?
Good afternoon, everyone. We have a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. The time is now five past 3:00 p.m. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice that this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council, posted on the city website and City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin will be arriving for closed session. Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullock?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillenshorts?
Here.
City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
CFO Haney?
Here.
Council, we have Resolution 206-06, 2025, a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 1012-4-12. This is to discuss bargaining negotiations for the following units: GWU Upper Management, UAW Middle Management, CWA White Collar, CWA Blue Collar, PBA Local 59 for Superior Officers, and the 609 Lafayette Street Welcome Center lease.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, we'll now go into closed session. And again, to the public, we do anticipate to be back no earlier than 4:00 p.m., maybe 4:00, 4:10. It may take us a couple extra minutes. Thank you.
Time is 3:06.
Good afternoon, everybody. We're just coming out of a closed session. We'll get started in just a moment. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We're coming out of closed session in which we will be taking action this afternoon. Mr. Solicitor, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, there's a few items noted on the closed session agenda, resolution, rather. So council does anticipate taking action on the upper management, blue collar and PBA Local 59 Superior Officers contracts, and we'll be going over in detail those resolutions when we get to it.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to close the executive session, the closed session?
We've just returned at 4:02 PM.
Okay, I agree with that. Okay, with that, we'll open up our regular meeting agenda, and first will be additions and deletions.
Yes, I'll go over those, council. So the first addition is 21806, 2025. This is a resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement for the New Jersey DOT for the reconstruction of Grant Street project.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be a monkey wrench, but point of order, should we call the meeting to order?
We already did.
Okay.
Yeah, so we did roll call. Yep, we don't usually do it like this, but...
I'm sorry, thanks for explaining that.
Thank you. But yeah, this is a continuation of the three o'clock meeting.
Thank you.
So, to that effect, do we have a motion to add 21806, 2025 to the regular meeting agenda?
Do I have a motion? Yes. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next, we have 21906, 2025, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the City of Cape May and the Telecommunications Workers of America Local 1036, the City of Cape May and the Telecommunications Workers of America Local 1036 Blue Collar Unit.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
We have 22006-2025, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the City of Cape May and the Government Workers Union Upper Management Unit, and authorizing the execution of a new collective bargaining agreement between the parties covering the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And finally, 22106-2025, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the City of Cape May and PBA Local 59 as the bargaining agent for the City of Cape May Police Department Lieutenants and Captain, and authorizing the execution of a new collective bargaining agreement between the parties covering the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2028.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Any updates or old business here?
Updates or old business? City Manager?
Thank you. Just wanted to update, you're probably, Siobhan Construction on the Promenade project, they were bolting down the last set of benches today, so they should be cleaned up, cleared out for the summer season, and the promenade is now back fully open with no restrictions. So they will return after Labor Day and continue the work on the promenade. Another good announcement, Mayor, we received a letter from the Department of Community Affairs awarding us for the second phase of ADA improvements to extend the ADA mats through the tennis ADA path through the, continue through the tennis club and up through the physics estate. So that way, we'll be able to have one continuous ADA path through, from Madison through Kiwanis Park, which was a small cities grant, and then we had two phases that will construct in the fall and winter to get us all the way up through the tennis club and the physics estate up to Washington Street. So that, we'll look forward to a project in the fall/winter coming forward.
Just a quick question on that project. Have there been revisions to the map as far as the, that access from behind for parking?
So, so I just actually had a meeting last week with MAC and the tennis club to kind of go over how we're going to route the project through there. Over the next two weeks, I'll be meeting with our design professionals to go over that project with them, and then we'll, we'll, we have some slight changes on how we're routing through there, but the tennis club and the physi, I mean, MAC are comfortable with how we're going to get the path through there, and we work with both of those groups pretty well, and they seem pretty happy. So once, once I have that final route, I'll bring it back to council and present how that's going to look on paper to council as we move forward through design.
Great, thank you.
And every, you know, from a standpoint of all of our city departments, we're really, you know, now that, you know, it's always from Memorial Day to Fourth of July, you know, we're still in the slow, I call it the little slow period between the real heavy start of the summer, but all the departments are really geared up. We have all of our summer staff, you talked to a chief back over at the lifeguard. We have probably one of the largest rookie classes we've had in years, so we'll be able to be fully staffed and open up some of the, some of our beach stands that had not been, I'll say, fully opened in several years. So I think we'll be able to have a fully, full beach open for protection this year, and, you know, have all the beach taggers are out there, and Public Works has the town looking really nice. So all the departments are really stepped up, and we're ready for the full summer season to be upon us. So thank you.
That's great. City Solicitor, any updates?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, City Council, I see a citizenship award update.
Can I go back to the city manager? Yes.
So I did pass out, I did not have a full presentation. I passed out a set of user fees on, you know, I've been meeting with Casey on looking at what are a lot of use facilities fees are. Some of these fees that I'm presenting to you have not really been formalized, so, but we, you know, we're looking at needing them, updating them based on a true ROI for what our employee costs are, especially like when we're setting up for special events, whether it's in the small convention side, you know, setting up one hall or both halls, and seeing what those employee costs are. So I've, we've done some preliminary work. I wanted to present that to council as, as a draft for what user fees and use of facility fees that we're looking forward, and then by the next meeting, I'll work with Chris on, working on the ordinance to, you know, put it in ordinance form. I may make a recommendation that we may have maybe an ordinance and a resolution, because these fees need to be updated fairly regularly, that we may do a base fee ordinance and then have the ability to update the fees by resolution from time to time as, you know, as we, as our costs change, we may want to update these without needing to go to a full ordinance revision.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I see that you have firefighters, you know, a hundred dollars per hour, police officers a hundred dollars per hour, but for fire engines, you have a hundred and fifty per hour. Is there a reason why we don't have police vehicles as part of this analysis?
So we've, our typical blended rate for the, the police officer includes the vehicle. Usually, though, when you staff a fire engine, you have, you can't just staff it, usually with a police vehicle, it's police vehicle and one officer. With a fire engine, you need multiple firefighters. So the costing for the fire, you know, so it's, that's why we, you know, essentially fire truck and a firefighter, and then additional fighters, fighters would be à la carte to add on based on the need for that project.
Okay.
Great. Okay. And City Council, the citizenship award?
So this past year, we recognized, actually, the mayor recognized that we had not done the citizenship award for the monument on the Washington Street Mall since, I think, around COVID 2021. So we took that opportunity to resurrect this program, and we're able to recognize four wonderful individuals who have contributed to the City of Cape May over the course of many, many years, and held that event in a couple of weeks ago. So this is to be able to set the stage for continuing, continuing this program, and to do so in a more routine and regulated fashion. So this is the award description, and then the back is the nomination, which would go to the city clerk's office. So if you have someone who you think is appropriate, who is worthy of this, to complete this, and obviously, a summary of their contributions to the city would be, should be included.
That's great.
And just the deadline for residents?
Yeah.
When is the deadline?
Yeah, it says December 31st here.
By the end of the year, so.
So annually, until December 31st, you can submit this to my office.
So just remember that we're watching, all of you, to see who would be the 2025 Citizen of the Year, so be on your best behavior.
And also, please don't mention us, because we're not allowed to.
Perfect, all right, thank you. Onto ordinances for introduction?
Yes, so tonight, we have ordinance 568-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 194 of the city code regarding construction activities to require notification of work to adjoining owners sharing a party wall.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council?
Yes, so this actually came out of some discussions primarily around the R4 area, Village Green, and there are two others in here, but we have a, an addition or an amendment to the ordinance. Mr. Gillen Schwartz, could you?
Sure. Just, I received some feedback from council members prior to this meeting, and just, just suggesting adding a statement of purpose to go into the, the city code provision that's included in the ordinance. So what's before council now, you would just add a section before a new Section A and move everything down, and it could read as follows. Statement of purpose, the purpose of this section is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the city by establishing reasonable notice requirements for construction activities involving properties that share one or more party walls with adjoining structures. The city finds and declares that construction, renovation, or demolition work on buildings with shared or adjoining walls has the potential to impact neighboring properties, both structurally and functionally. In order to reduce conflicts, preserve the integrity of shared structures, and foster cooperative, cooperative relationships among property owners, it is the intent of this section to require that any property owner or applicant proposing such work provide timely written notice to all adjacent property owners with whom a party wall is shared. This section shall be known as the Good Neighbor Construction Notice Provision, and is enacted to ensure that neighboring property owners are properly informed prior to the commencement of any construction activity that may affect a shared, shared wall or create a condition of potential risk or disruption. It is the policy of the city to encourage proactive communication and responsible construction practices that reflect respect for the rights and concerns of adjoining owners.
So that the intention of this is not for, to ask permission, but it's really just sort of a good neighbor policy. For those of us who, you know, live next to or an adjoining party wall, having your neighbor, having done construction myself, letting them know when I'm, you know, was undertaking construction, I think just is a common courtesy. And so as activities like this are taking place, I think it's just good practice for us to encourage property owners to just notify their neighbor that they may be having some activity taking place, that they would be aware of contractors in proximity to their property, you know, things of that nature. So. This is only for shared walls.
It's not, it's not, you're next to somebody and you share a property line, that's not regulated. It's just if you share a party wall.
A party wall, yes. And this is something that the zoning officer actually brought to our attention, as something that he has been doing sort of as a practice to encourage communication, so that, you know, people are aware of what's going on. So that is the intention here. It really is just sort of a soft introduction to say, listen, if you're going to do work on your property, or if you have a neighbor who is, just let them know, you know, as a common courtesy, so. And thank you, Mr. Gillen Schwartz, for putting that preamble together. I think it actually works for what the intention of this is.
And I think this is the case for all of these ordinances, the next couple ordinances, that the planning board has reviewed and agreed with each of these, so. Okay, any, any questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Want to make a motion to amend that?
I'm sorry, yeah.
I'll make the motion to amend the ordinance to include the preamble as put forth by Mr. Gillen Schwartz.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Everyone understands that this, for the amendment, do I have a motion on the amendment? I mean, I'm sorry, do I, roll call on the amendment? Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. Do I have a motion on the amended ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
We have 569-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 417 of the city code to clarify exemptions from site plan review.
Do I have a motion?
I will make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
570-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 525 of the city zoning code to clarify design standards for exterior air conditioning units in the R4 zone.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Again, I know this came up from our zoning officer, and again, was unanimously approved by planning board. Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
571-2025, an ordinance designating an unnamed public right of way as Dempsey Drive in honor of Emily Dempsey.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Everyone wants that.
Everyone wants a second.
Any questions or comments?
Do we have to make an ordinance to make this a one-way?
Oh, I think we do.
Wasn't it already a one-way?
The question is, is this included in the ordinance of making it a one-way, the Dempsey Drive ordinance?
It's, it's not really regulating the direction, it's acknowledging that it's a, it's a one-way.
Should we add it, or is it okay?
Should we do that separately and not take away from the, you know?
Yeah, this is, this is a, this is a different, this is naming a street, this is not the traffic, this is not for traffic control.
Okay, okay.
And arguably, it's not really a street regulated under traffic for a one-way's perspective, so.
We can direct.
Why don't we?
I mean, I mean, I have some other streets that I'm going to be evaluating for one-ways that I have some requests on, so let me look at that, and then I'll bring back probably a list of some one-ways that I've had some requests for, and we'll look at that.
You comfortable with that, Mr. Meyer?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Great, okay.
I want to make sure we can picket people with.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I think I speak for everyone that we're thrilled to name Dempsey Drive for Emily, and we had a wonderful ceremony the other day, and that we thank you, to the Dempsey family. Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And Mayor, I think it's important to mention that Mrs. Dempsey sent us a very nice letter in response to it.
Yeah, really. She did secondarily ask if she can put a toll booth on that street.
And finally, we have 572-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Cape May City Code regarding metered parking and incorporating the Ocean View Parking Lot pursuant to city use agreement.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make.
I still need one. Do I have a second? Thank you.
Can I have a comment?
Comment?
I just want to, you know, really, I, I look forward to this being a model that we might be able to move throughout the city, and having a partnership with some of our private parking lots to, you know, when they're not in use in the off time, that if we can encourage them to open it up to public parking when they're not using it, you know, having that public-private partnership, I think it's a, it's a win-win for everyone. And I just thank the Ocean View for, you know, stepping forward, coming, you know, having the discussion with the city and allowing us to partner with them. So hopefully, this is just, I know we did this with Cape Island Baptist, which was kind of the start, but this, that was, we already had an arrangement with them, and, you know, sharing of a parking lot, this is really the next step of really a public partner, private partnership. So I look forward to reaching out to maybe some of the other establishments in the, in the city that might be able to do the same thing.
I think, I think it's a great job, Paul, and, and echo, I'm sure everyone echoes those sentiments to the Ocean View, and an open invitation to any of the other businesses out there. I think it's, or churches, or any other organizations, this really does make a lot of sense for the businesses, it makes a lot of sense for the city of Cape May. If you're like me, and you see an empty parking lot where there's a ton of parking needed, this makes a lot of sense, and, and just to put it out there to the businesses and organizations, you know, this takes care of insurance and things like that, that obviously is important to businesses. So I think it's a good, good win-win type scenario for anyone out there with a parking lot in the city of Cape May. So, okay. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And we have ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption is 560-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Cape May City Code regarding metered parking incorporating the AME Church Parking Lot, and there is a public hearing tonight, Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 560, the AME Church Parking Lot? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And 561-2025, an ordinance amending Section 482 of the city code to update the policies and procedures for the protection of trees in the city of Cape May with a public hearing, Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 561? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I just want to again thank Councilman Meyer and the Shade Tree Commission for always being diligent and obviously makes a ton of sense to protect our trees, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Next, we have the public portion on the resolutions only.
Would like to open it up, the public comment for resolutions this evening, this afternoon? Is anyone here wishing to speak on resolutions? Hi, Roz.
Roz Johnson, 826 Lafayette Street. My question actually has to do with the Welcome Center lease, and I guess that was on, on your closed session, Resolution 206. I don't know if you can talk about it, but I was wondering, who holds the lease now? Is it not the Chamber of Commerce, correct?
Do we have that as a resolution today? Not that we don't?
No, no, it was, it was on for a closed session discussion, but the city is currently negotiating with MAC.
Right.
And nobody, the chamber left the space at the end of their term, did not renew. And so the city's looking to partner with MAC right now, so.
Okay.
We were discussing finalizing those terms and probably will have something in the very near future with MAC.
Okay, well, actually, I would encourage that because I saw that on the agenda and last year I had brought up that the Welcome Center really looked horrible and shabby inside. So before the meeting, I decided to go in and look, and I was really pleasantly surprised now that MAC has taken it over. There's a beautiful map inside, it's huge, and the, the way they have it set up is so much more welcoming than when the chamber had it. I talked to the volunteers that were there, they were very nice. When I came in, they said, you know, can you, can you help me with anything? And that really wasn't the response that I got when the Chamber of Commerce was there. But they did say, you know, I, I was telling them, oh, it's so beautiful inside here, it's so nice. And they said, yeah, we really wish that the outside looked like how we feel on the inside. The outside, I don't know if you know, is gray, grayish, brown, very, very dull, not very welcoming. And they said, you know, they wish the outside looked kind of more sunny. That's the word that they used. So I don't know if you'd ever consider it possibly, you know, given the outside since, because the, the sign on the street and your plantings that you've put there are so nice, but definitely, once you get to the Welcome Center, the outside does not reflect the welcoming sign that's inside, that's on the street. So if you would ever consider making that look a little bit more welcoming on the outside because they definitely have made a wonderful improvement inside. So I thank MAC for that. So, thank you.
Great, great suggestions. Thank you, Roz. Anyone else on resolutions this evening? Mr. Rousch?
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Joel Rousch, 1010 New York Avenue. Resolution 211, is, is this the, an intention to serve alcohol during the concerts?
It's.
Or make that available?
So what, what happened is, we, we, council already authorized summer concert series promoters. And one of the contracts includes, already includes the ability to pursue social affairs permits, which is a specific, kind of like one-off permit. You're limited to a certain number a year, but they have to be obtained by a nonprofit organization. So it's a specific type of one-off permit, and there's a limited number for the year. This has already been authorized in one of the contracts, and what this resolution is doing is putting both of those contracts in the same playing field and basically saying to both promoters, look, you can, if you would like, and the city would like to have that available for those specific events, it can be done through a social affairs permit.
If there are, especially concerts that the city doesn't run, can that, can the same permit be issued to other people?
It's only, this, this resolution is specifically targeting the summer concert series and those events that were authorized by prior resolutions. So if we're going to do something different at another event, that's going to be subject to further authorization by council, but this is dealing specifically with the 2025 Summer Concert Series.
And if the summer concert series would move outside, could the alcohol then be served outside as well?
Subject to permitting requirements and, and public safety issues and those types of considerations, which all go into a social affairs permit application.
But doesn't that come into conflict with the prohibition, the prohibition against serving or having alcohol on the beach?
Well, this, this would be an exception to that, and this really contemplates the interior of Convention Hall. So the, the location would really, if, if it's proposed to be changed, that would require another discussion with the city.
Because I would strongly discourage having alcohol distributed on the beach. I think that would be something we really don't want to see expanded. My next question is on Resolution 212. I've not heard any discussion among council about really what this means, and I think it would be a, we should have an opportunity to know what, what it is, are we talking about? And also in view of that, since it's, and I don't know exactly where the city property line is between Cape May and West Cape May, whether that's in conflict with the property line. But certainly, whatever we do in a restriction way is going to impact West Cape May. And I think it needs to have a certain discussion so that we know what it is that you're planning and, and then move forward with the study. But at this point, I, I would like to hear at least a discussion of what's planned and how council feels about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rousch.
Should we just get this out of the way?
Just have it.
Separate from the agenda?
Do you want to? Go ahead.
It would be, we're sorry, gentlemen, we just wanted to follow up on Mr. Rousch's comment on 212. If you give.
So this is following up on a project that I presented in last year's, the 2024 Capital Bond Project. It's a flood resiliency wall revetment that we're looking at. It's, it's all within the city limits of Cape May, essentially coming, I'll say, at the abutment at the Cape Island Creek Bridge on Elmira Street and would follow along, I'll say, essentially the coastal marsh and the wetland line, along the backside of the substation, wrap around Venice, down along the Bank Street parking lot, and then up, wouldn't hit Broad Street, but would head towards Broad Street and essentially create a raised wall to prevent the overland flooding, mitigate the flooding that comes into that area. We did have, I was just really quick looking, I thought I had put up a presentation online, but now if, if council moves forward with this, I know we did it in our presentation, I had a map for council that showed, I'll say, the location as well. If this is authorized tonight, I'll put a, a section on the city website that will further describe this project now that it's going to move into the design phase to show the public exactly where this flood resiliency wall would be located. And as more information would come up, we would do that. We did have a, I'll say, a pre-application meeting with the DEP, just to kind of see what permit hurdles will be had, so that's, that was kind of the delay in looking at moving this forward and what permit restrictions or requirements so that they could accurately prepare a proposal for the city.
I can, if I could.
Yeah.
Yeah. For years, this has always been an area that has been a flood-prone area, and I guess really until you came on, Paul, nobody ever mentioned anything about doing this. It just makes sense for that end of town.
It means one of our two.
And I recall it as part of the presentation.
It was part of the presentation and part of the Capitol from last year.
Yeah.
I mean, it's probably one of our two hotspots, you know, here, Yadd Avenue.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's, it's one of our most critical spots that gets flooded and a lot of people use that to move back and forth, so it's a critical location.
The road's closed if there's a major storm, so it's.
And not even, not even a major storm. We could have a, you know, full moon flood tide, you could have three, four, or six inches of water in that street.
I floated my car over that bridge before. I floated my car, like, wheels just going, wah-wah-wah-wah-wah.
Yep, so, so it's, it's definitely needed and that was one of the things that I wanted to move forward, so.
Okay.
The water that does get trapped in that location, it will be pumped out, right?
We already, and that was something, you know, about a year and a half ago, Public Works worked to re-bring, because the pumps were there, they were taken away, we brought those back in 2023, so you'll see that the flooding, and then now we have also interconnected because the pumps that are over on Venice Avenue kind of just handled the intersection of Venice and Bank, and that, so the flooding that would be over on Elmira Street was not connected and didn't have anywhere to get. We interconnected those two systems as part of some of the work that we had done. So now when we, the pumps will actually help clear out Elmira Street too, but this wall will help further prevent water from getting in that area.
Joel, this is a good question because to be honest with you, it's good to get a reminder on this stuff too. And I, it reminds me, we, going back even a couple of years, we had Stockton Coastal Research do an analysis, they actually put tide measurements in some of the storm drains and things like that, so actually kind of interesting stuff. Any, any other comments tonight on resolutions this evening, or this afternoon still?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
John Bobic, Captain Cape May Police. On behalf of myself, Lieutenant Mazza, Lieutenant Walker, just wanted to say thank you to council, thank you to the manager's office. This was, putting this superior officers contract together, this has been a long time coming. We've been attempting to try and get this as soon as we had the captain, lieutenant, chief administrative setup in the police department, we've been trying to get this together. It, it'll be a tremendous cost-saving to both the city and the local PBA, which recognize them as well. And just want to say thank you to everyone involved. It, it was very reasonable and courteous negotiations, and we really appreciate it.
Captain, we thank you for that, and we, we thank you guys every day. I mean, seriously, you're top-notch, so.
Appreciate it.
Having said that, we have actually not voted on this yet. We voted to add it to the agenda.
Well, thank you for the consideration.
Does that mean you'll be back up in five minutes when we vote on it?
No, but.
You got it. We'll have a seat now.
Not to give any.
I haven't laughed this far.
Yeah, yeah. We'll take, we'll take double thanks all day, every day.
Anyone else on the, on the resolutions?
Yeah. Yeah, it was out of order.
Onto the consent agenda?
Yes, council, is there anything you'd like to remove from the consent agenda this evening?
Anything, council? No.
No? All right. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
On the regular agenda, we have 21806, 2025, the resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey DOT for the reconstruction of Grant Street Project.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Excuse me. We have 21906, 2025, resolution approving an MOA between the city of Cape May and the CWA Local 1036 Blue Collar Unit.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Next, we have 22006, 2025, the resolution approving an MOA between the city of Cape May and GWU Upper Management, recognizing the execution of a new collective bargaining agreement between the parties covering January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And finally, 22106, 2025, resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the city of Cape May and PBA Local 59 as the bargaining agent for Cape May City Police Department lieutenants and captains, authorizing the execution of a new collective bargaining agreement for the parties covering January 1st, 25 through December 31st, 28.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. Thank you all very much.
Now it's adopted.
Now get back up and thank us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and, but, in all seriousness, thank you, gentlemen, very much. We appreciate all your hard work. Same to the GWU.
I just want to say a little something.
And the, and our blue collar.
It starts, Eric presents to the city of Cape May Public Works. So it starts with the top down, so the table right here is a perfect example of the leadership to the members of Public Works. They couldn't stay, obviously, but they do thank you. Paul, Justin, thanks for everything, so.
Hey, Eric, they've been doing such a good job, we're going to give them Juneteenth off. This Thursday.
I'll take it. Well, some people are working.
Some people are working. Thank them for us as well, too.
Yep.
Thanks, Eric.
And Eric, to you too, thank you so much for your hard work and leadership.
The city looks great.
Thank you. With that, we are on to new business. City solicitor?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
City manager, any new business?
Well, new business, Juneteenth, we'll be officially be closing City Hall Thursday on Juneteenth. So we'll be posting that for, we will be doing regular recycling collection on Juneteenth, as well as our normal beach collection, you know, for trash and recycling on our beach in the mall and those different public spaces. So all those types of activities will be, continue to be operational and run as normal.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, is there not, I think you sent out an email with regard to some changes with recycling center next week on canning?
So for next week, the, thank you. There's going to be doing, South Jersey Gas is going to be doing roadwork on Canning House Lane. So the recycling center will not be able to have the convenience center be open to drop off. I've worked with Eric and superintendent in Public Works. We will have a recycling-only drop-off at Lafayette Street Park for next week, while the recycling center can't be opened for South, by search, because of South Jersey Gas work.
Could you describe what would be limited to the drop-off site at Lafayette?
Just your normal household recycling. Anything that you would normally take over for household recycling, we will be able to accept. We would ask residents just to hold off if you have grass clippings or leaf droppings or anything else that they would be dropping off and want to drop off at the recycling center, just ask them to please hold it for that, that week. We just don't want to try to inconvenience a resident by trying to get down a half-closed road in between construction activity. You know, Canning House Lane is already a narrow road as it is, and it's just going to be better for the public. But we wanted to have the availability, because we know a lot of residents rely on the residential recycling. And so, you know, we worked with Eric over this last week to figure out how we can accommodate the residents. And we felt the most appropriate way was to be able to have a drop-off center at Lafayette Street Park, grass, you know, where we park, and there'll be a collection area there for normal business hours and drop off your residential recycling only there.
So is it only residential and not commercial?
Well, commercial too. Yeah, yeah, if a commercial business, but it's just, but it's just for.
Just as long as it's, it's.
Regular, plastic, co-mangled, single-stream recycling collection only. Nothing, nothing beyond that.
City clerk, any updates?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Council members, councilmember Baldwin?
I just have one thing. The Beach Safety Committee is going to hold their fourth annual open house at headquarters from 8:00 to 10:00 on Sunday. There's going to be mock rescue demonstrations. There'll be refreshments that'll be served, so breakfast, your typical bagels.
Coffee and donuts.
Coffee and donuts, yes. And there'll be somebody announcing it on the, on the promenade.
That's great. Thank you.
If you get a chance, stop by.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes, just a reminder that actually councilman Bodnar and I, he's joining me tomorrow for the mayoral wellness walk on the promenade, on the beach mats north of Convention Hall. I'll be joined by some of the members of the OEM team, Deputy Chief Eck, Eric, Frank McCluskey, perhaps Chief Fashel, based on his schedule, and Harry Back from Beach Patrol. We're going to be focusing our discussion points as we encounter residents and visitors around public safety. Hurricane preparedness, the NEXL program, swimming, you know, on the beach activities, swimming near guards, posted areas, things of that nature. So we just came up with some talking points so that we could engage with residents and visitors on that topic. So tomorrow at 11 o'clock, we'll be kicking off, heading north on the beach mats. And it's not going to rain.
Finally.
Well, now you jinxed me.
All right, councilman Meyer?
Thank you, mayor. We're, we as the Shade Tree Commission and the subcommittee are still finding trees of heaven, so keep lookout for them in a time beam before we take those trees down. Look for the lanternflies. Right now, what they look like is little black, little nymphs or whatnot, a little black with white dots. If you see a bunch in your yard, grab a spray bottle, you know, put some soapy water and some vinegar in there, spray those babies. That way, they won't progress to the next stage of their life cycle, and they won't grow their wings. So that's something that we're working on as well. Another thing that the Shade Tree Commission is looking, working on is creating a tree bank. Currently, the code is that if you get the permission to remove a tree on your property, you have to replace it with two trees. And some people have a limited amount of space, and with the permission of the Shade Tree Commission, we will waive the need to plant those trees, but we will ask for money and, you know, instead, that way we can create the tree bank and plant more trees on the street lines of Cape May.
That's great.
And, you know, finally, I just want to mention that, you know, we have very strict laws about trees in Cape May. We, all these trees are protected. We had a person take down a tree that was 20 inches in diameter. Currently, the code is pi r squared times 27. So, you know, 10 inches times 3.14, you know, 10 times 10, that's 3.14 times 27. This tree that we had taken down, they, they cut it and they put a planter on top of it to hide that it was gone. That tree was worth over $8,000 in penalties. So it's very, we take this very seriously, folks.
Thank you for your diligence on that, Mr. Meyer. Just real quickly, I'd just add, actually, this morning, we took the DCA around. This is state agency, the Community Affairs. And they, one of the things that they do is a lot of ADA accessibility grants that the city has been fortunate enough to receive a few of. Also, the Small Cities Grant, and one of which we've been working on Franklin Street out front. And I just want to share with the public that they were just so thrilled with the projects that we have going on using their funds, which, you know, you want to be careful when you're using grant funding to make sure you're doing what you said you're going to do and do it well and spend it well. And I just report to you that their happiness in frankly being able to show their higher-ups in the state some really beautiful pictures. And I just tell you, included on that tour was, of course, Franklin Street and, you know, the new gas lanterns and lights and the brickwork and the crosswalks. It included the Kiwanis Club Park. We went over there and all these kids are out there playing, having a great time, and all ADA accessible. So they were just so impressed with the work that went into, and the use of the funds, frankly. And the last one that we took them to see was the beach walk and to be able to show them 1.6 miles of, and of course, we saw a few people there on motorized scooters and wheelchairs using that. So anyway, I just want to describe to the general public how thrilled they were. And I think that means that there might be some more money coming in, which is always a good thing. And we did just get the letter on Phase Two of the tennis club for that accessibility project. Two other quick ones, we just had the Nature Trail opening, wonderful opening. I thank everybody for being there and encourage anybody to go take a look. It really is a wonderful project and beautiful. And we thank the county again for their support of that project. One other just public, you know, announcement, I just went last week with my wife and saw the Cape May Stage opening play. It was wonderful, and I just feel like everybody should go out and see it. It's really wonderful, and it's, it's nice to just have a night where you're not on a television screen or a phone screen or something, and you go out and experience that live arts in our community, which is really wonderful. And I know Eastland Theater as well has a, has a new play coming up Thursday. Thank you for their first showing on Thursday night. So go out and see the show, it really is great. So thank you. With that, I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Edward Quigley. I live in Richmond, Virginia, 5521 Cottage Street. I've come to Cape May to address you on an issue of safety. In July 7th of 2015, the pole, an oak shaft of a wind-blown beach umbrella, impaled me through the left eye and breached my brain cavity. I died on the operating table in brain surgery. Took 23 minutes of chest compressions and seven cycles with those paddles to bring me back. And so after recovery and a few operations, I decided my mission was to educate people on the dangers of wind-blown beach umbrellas. And I do have a handout, if maybe that could be passed around. In 2021, a few senators got together and wrote a letter to the Consumer Product Safety Commission Chair. And out of that came a task group in ASTM. That's the American Standards for Testing and Materials. If you buy a PVC pipe, it says ASTM and a number. In April of '24, a safety standard for beach umbrellas was published by ASTM. And in May of '24, the Consumer Product Safety Commission incorporated that into their guidance for beach umbrella safety. We had a team of engineers. I worked on the task group in ASTM for about three years, still on it, still working it. We had a team of engineers from the Consumer Product Safety Commission, and they spent two years testing beach umbrellas in wind conditions on beaches and in wind tunnels to develop the scientific data that determines what can keep a beach umbrella safe and secure on the beach. And so the safety standard was written with two things in mind. One is some testing that could allow manufacturers, distributors, retailers, even private individuals to test beach umbrella paraphernalia, which the main object of the testing is the umbrella and also an anchor device. It was determined that no beach umbrella is safe on the beach without an anchor device. And you may think that if you put it, you know, a foot and a half into the sand and tilt it into the wind, it's safe, it's not. 10 days after my accident, more than 40 beach umbrellas blew down the beach in Ocean City, Maryland. It was late in the day, and fortunately, no one was injured. I watched that video so many times, and it came so close. So what was determined was that for a standard beach umbrella, the kind that we see on the beach as, you know, the oak shaft and the seven-and-a-half-foot diameter canopy, it takes 75 pounds of resistance to keep that secure on the beach in a wind up to 30 miles per hour. And we set 30 miles per hour at the upper limit, because if it's blowing at 30 miles an hour, you're probably being sandblasted. Not many people stay on the beach in those conditions. So in the standard, there are wind tunnel tests, and there's a simple pole test. And it was determined that that 75 pounds is absolutely what's required. And so if a manufacturer tests their device and it passes, they can affix a compliance label to the anchor device. Some of these are integrated systems, so you can put it on the integrated system as well. And also, if you look at the handout, there's a, an image of a warning label. That warning label is prescribed to be affixed to the inside of canopies of newly manufactured umbrellas. And we had an expert from the Consumer Product Safety Commission that helped design that label. And originally, we were going a little timid with the graphic on it, but the expert said, no, it's like a lawnmower or a power tool. We show cutoff fingers on lawnmowers. You need to get the attention of the consumer, the user of the product. And so that's why it's a little bit graphic. I'll tell you, there was a little worry about whether it would affect children, but at Halloween, the children walk around and they know that that's not real right there. And so we don't believe the labels will affect children in a negative way. Hopefully, their parents will explain that there's a danger there, and that's why the label is there. So why am I here, other than spreading the word? Beach umbrellas can be dangerous. There have been some deaths. There's thousands of injuries each year documented by the Consumer Product Safety Commission. And so what I have is an aluminum sign. And my ask is that these be posted near beach access points and possibly on the back of lifeguard stands. There is a city that has a tram, Wildwood, and they're actually putting them on the back of the trams as well. I have a donor for beach umbrella safety, the organization that I started, who will provide these signs free of charge to any city that's willing to post them. And all I need is a little advance word, and they'll manufacture them, we'll get them delivered, and your city can put them up with a screw or two. So I know that you probably have some process to consider this, but I would hate to think that a child or even an adult was injured because we didn't warn them that there's a danger. Thank you.
That's, first off, we're happy you're here, and thank you for that. I mean, I actually know someone in Cape May who was impaled by an umbrella and had some significant injuries. So I know close to home that this is a tough, it's very real, real danger.
It's real.
Obviously, you know, we probably have a couple ordinances we'd have to look at for the sign.
Of course.
But the offer of doing that and through it, and for free, is awesome. And we have, I think you may have just heard, we have the beach safety advisory. When was that again?
Yeah, I was going to say, could you take maybe take the sign and have you with them?
Yeah. You can have this sign?
Would that be okay?
Absolutely.
Because we have our open house on Sunday.
Okay.
Why don't you, why don't you stay in Cape May till Sunday and come to our open house?
I would, but I'm babysitting my granddaughter 15 months old.
Bring her down.
Wake Forest, North Carolina.
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm actually speaking in Atlantic City tomorrow, and in the morning, I'm dropping off 180 signs to Long Beach Island.
Wow.
So we've got probably eight cities now that have decided to go forward, and actually, I've delivered the signs.
That's great.
No, just a quick question for you. The anchors that you're, this is showing you the danger of this, but the anchors, I think, are what's really important.
Right.
I have an older anchor, you know, that twists into the ground, but are the new ones affixed with? Like, you know, is it CPS, like, is it?
It's still kind of new. There are some products, if you look on Amazon and put in that F3681, you'll see some products come up that already have compliance. And the, the screw devices are not effective. So if you think about it, yes.
The ones that are separate from the pole itself?
Yeah. So if you think about it, you could put that into the ground and probably with about 10 pounds of force, pull it. Because the only thing that's holding it after that umbrella rocks a little bit is the additional weight of the sand in the screw itself.
Oh, not the screw one, like, it's like a, like a propeller?
Right, right. So think about it, you've got this much blade or so around it, around that screw device. And so the, the sand within that blade is the only additional weight that you have, and it's not going to amount to 75 pounds. The engineers determined that. So my advice, check on Amazon, there's a number of devices out there. And hopefully, you find one that is convenient for, for you. My whole family has them now, of course, and we've been using anchors for years, fortunately.
I'll bring this up at the Beach Safety Committee meeting. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for allowing me to come here, an out-of-towner, and share my story. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
I love your town, by the way. Been here a few times, and I love it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak today, tonight? Tonight now, 5:02.
Jules Roush, 1010 New York Avenue, really hard to not accept the kind of offer that that gentleman has made. No brainer. As I look at the direction that the city's going, and then this past week, we got announced in the newspaper that the federal government is going to discontinue funds for beach replenishment. And they're pulling back funds from every department that they possibly can. I'm concerned about the beach fund withdrawal of funding. We have a, as I understand, we're scheduled for '27 for replenishment. And this, their, the federal program is so important to us that I don't think we could just sit by and just do nothing. I don't, frankly, don't know how you would propose to try and get some political assistance, but this is such a priority for Cape May that I think it's important that really we kind of address and be aggressive in trying to make sure that, you know, we do get our funding. And in line with that, you know, we have about 15 years left on our contract. And, you know, if it's an appropriate time to start to initiate some kind of effort towards extending that contract. You know, Cape May was in a unique position because the federal government approved it based on the mistake that the federal government made with the jetties. So, you know, we, we need to be proactive in that particular regard. But that also brings to light that we need to, we need to be more aggressive with the D-SAL plant. I don't know where that particularly project stands, but that's a health issue, a safety issue. It's another, it's another one that involves a lot of money and dependence upon the government for whatever assistance will be there. But I would strongly recommend that we be more aggressive in seeking those funds. And then we also, I know both the Delaware Avenue and Wilmington Avenue projects have been approved, but there's another issue there, is funding. My understanding is both of those are dependent upon funding. So here we are, we're looking at, you know, some of the major issues in this community are all based on federal funding. And I think, I don't know how to suggest to the, to city council that they develop some kind of a proactive committee, organization, to try to achieve success in accomplishing these three major projects. So I bring that to your attention and hope that you will work towards that end.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Roush. And I think everyone up here agrees with you 100%, obviously. In fact, today, I spoke at the Chamber of Commerce in regards to the seawall funding from FEMA. If you're following the news, FEMA has been a bit of a target lately in regards to funding. And, you know, we have $25 million in, approved to do that. So we're waiting for that check to be distributed. So we're very hopeful, but we'll see. But I want to just say one thing in. But I want to just say one thing in support of it. That's not something that happened just all of a sudden. It's based off of years and years of work to get to the twenty-five million dollars in funding. And, and frankly, some aggressive push. But in defense of my experience with a, with a group like FEMA in regards to this twenty-five million dollars, when it comes down to it, you think it's going to all be about scientific data, which it is. You know, you're, you're looking at where are your weak points and things like that from flooding and estimated, you know, sea level rise and/or storm surge, et cetera. But it's dollars and cents. FEMA wants to fund projects that protect a lot of value. So when we're talking about Wilmington and where, of course, everyone saw it sandy, you remember the Wilmington sign, you know, was sand up to the sign. We had to prove that this project financially made a lot of sense, that we were protecting a lot of value with not so much of a cost compared to other projects, which are big, big projects, and that's one of the reasons that this was approved and funded. And so I say that in, just to say, this project makes a ton of financial sense. Forgetting, you know, any value that it may have to protecting the city, financially, this twenty-five million dollars protects billions of dollars in value. So, you know, talking kind of like, almost like an insurance person, you know, this makes a ton of sense to do. And, and that's the argument that, of course, we've been pushing, basically.
And I just would follow up. We're having those discussions on a monthly, bi-weekly basis with our federal partners, you know, both at the Army Corps of Engineers, FEMA, and our legislative teams, whether it's Congressman Andrew or Senator Booker's or Senator Kim's office. We're having regular discussions with those groups on all of our, those projects and making good headway on maintaining the funding that has been earmarked and lining us up for future earmarks. And we hope really soon to have a presentation to Council on the beach safety, to bring a proposal back to move that discussion forward. And, and doing that, you know, lining on how we can start looking at that fifteen-year mark and start that design and discussion with the Army Corps process. We'll probably in the fall have some discussions, and I'll bring forth with Council on how we're going to probably fund and mechanically phase in the desalinization plant and how we're going to look at that. I've been working with Kevin on doing some financial modeling and to be able to show Council and the public and our bulk user partners in West Cape May, Cape May Point and the Coast Guard on how we need to fund this. And, you know, we have some really realistic opportunities to, you know, make sure that the project is cost-effective, but also leveraging funding from our federal and state partners. So we're, we are looking at all those things and actively working on them. So it's on, I appreciate, you know, Jules bringing that to our table, but, but it is on our, you know, plate weekly.
Yep. Anyone else this evening, this evening? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Thank you.